All right, it is seven o'clock and we are recording, so welcome everyone. First, just a friendly reminder, if you have electronic devices, cell phones, et cetera, please put them on airplane mode or off so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone. This is the regular city council meeting from Minnetrista for November 1st, 2021. I'm going to start with introductions. This evening, we have staff members, Gary Peterson, who is our Public Works Superintendent, and we have Ally Paulus, who is our Director of Administration, our new City Clerk, Don Matzko, and then our City Engineer with WSB, Allison Fausky. And council members present this evening, we have Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, John Chomperlin, Pam Mortensen, I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the Mayor. And then on my right, we have our City Administrator, Mike Barone. Brian Grimm is our Finance Director. David Abel is our Community Development Director. Ron Beatty is with Kennedy and Graven, and our City Attorney, I don't think you're an engineer, are you?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. And then, sitting in for our Chief of Police this evening is Sergeant Pat Cummings. So, welcome again. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to the agenda as presented?
So.
I think Pam reached with to it. So Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favors would signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. This evening, we have two special presentations, and we're going to start out with Mr. Kirkwood, who is our LMCD, or Lake Minnetonka Conservation District Representative, and I believe the Executive Director, Vicky Schleuning, is with us this evening as well. Good evening, and thank you for coming.
Thank you all, thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. My name is Mike Kirkwood. I live at 5435 Cedar Grove. I've spent 28 years, so I've been a long time in Minnetrista, very happy. I am your delegate to the LMCD, and this is my finishing, my second season, coming up here. And tonight, we just wanted to introduce a few of the board members who have not heard this before, how to add their introduction to this community orientation, to the organization all over, and we had a shared podium with the Executive Director, Vicky Schleuning, and taking any questions you have. You may wonder offhand, if you're new to the area, why do we have a representative on the LMCD? And I just did a count this afternoon out of curiosity for myself, as to how many properties actually touch Lake Minnetonka in the city of Minnetrista. And just a rough count, there were 340 waterfront properties, and there are many more properties that would be in outlawed associations that would have access to the lake as well. So, a substantial number of Minnetrista residents have direct access to the lake. Just for comparison, the city of Minnetonka, I counted only 200 over half of the lake. So, we're actually touching it more than they are. So, just to kind of orientation, Mike, can I do this from here?
You'll need the arrows.
I believe you have this in front of you, if not, we'll get to the surface area of the lake, and shoreline, whatever it's, what do you say? Probably the more important statistic of everything, what I just told you, that's about how many citizens in Minnetrista really have property that actually busts the waterfront, and how many hundreds more would be off the lake, but still have legal access to it through outlawed associations. And, let's see here. So, our mission, established by the legislature in 1967, is to, initially to address some of the issues that were going on the lake at that time, large docks, sewage, and so on, but providing a more coordinated leadership role for activities on the lake, safety on the lake, and representing a variety of stakeholders who all have their hands on the lake and interest in the lake. So, it's been an area where there's been a lot of growing interest, as you well know, lots of traffic on the lake the last few years, to the point that we have been working hard to fundraise through our Save the Lake entity to help fund two additional patrol officers for the summer on the lake. So, we were successful in doing that last season, and we're looking at doing that again next year as well. Membership, let's get that. We coordinate with several different partners in the lake access and lake issues, not only residents, but businesses and special interest groups. We have very good support and involvement from the different arenas around the lake, and they are key stakeholders as well, so they're present in most of our meetings and help when there are issues. Our strategy for the next year is, at base mission, preserve and enhance the Lake Minnetonka experience. We're finding that there are conflicts that come up around who gets to do what on the lake, and how can they do it. Sometimes there are people who are taking advantage of the lake in dangerous ways, and so we're working hard to coordinate among the interests so that there can be a safe user experience on the lake. We do, as you say, fund underwrite, if you will, through donations, the Water Patrol from Hampton County, and we coordinate their activities to help protect safety on the lake. Our priorities going forward is to maintain a strong financial foundation, and Vicky can speak to more, any further questions on that. Clear and timely communications, we're looking to have a better visibility out there. We have been reticent, it's not reticent, but been not so good, at getting into the social media world, and we need to get a little more present than that, so we're looking to get some staff that can help us with that, and communications moving towards more operational effectiveness as a team. We do a fabulous job of reviewing applications for dock changes and dock expansions, we're very sophisticated about that, and we're looking to be even more effective in the other areas that we're involved with. Lake protection, AIS, historically, if you've been around the lake for years, we used to be recognized as the people who did the harvesting, with three or four different blue harvesters that would cut up weeds and haul them off the lake. That has fallen from favor after a number of discussions, in terms of what was the best way to get the weeds out of the lake, and we are now probably working more with developing local shoreline groups that can find their own chemical treatments in constricted areas with DNR support and observation. And Save the Lake is the division, if you will, of our organization, that is the fundraising group for additional safety on the lake and lake improvement projects. Vicky, want to move there?
Sure. Thank you. I've got a little overview of what our organization is about. If you go to the highlights and projects, I'm just going to cover a couple things that kind of have interest this year. There you go. Again, Mike, we're not going to talk about too much, but you have a budget with you, and there was a reduction primarily because of the AIS, and basically a suspension for 2022. But we are looking at an AIS strategy, and really looking lake-wide, and you'll see a few things that we did this year and coming up next year, new threats. We might talk a little bit, too, on our new website. We added a lot more information. We added a lakeshore owners webpage, based on feedback from milliners and from lakeshores, and so far, that's been a big gap. We'll continue to add to it as we go, but for the AIS, we put a lot of different information of what to look for, and this year was kind of a tough year for vegetation, we had a lot of calls about that, but we also spent a lot of time with people calling us out to look at suspicious vegetation. We need a lot of these, we're 14,000 acres. The safety of boat-generated wakes, last year, that kind of came up, and we've always had some concerns about wakes, but we had like, literally hundreds of calls to our office, and we kind of worked together, putting together a core group, and with interest-led education. It was still good, I've been out to the lake a few times, several times this year, monitoring it, seeing what happened, much better than last year. The study that was supposed to be out in fall will really be, I spoke to the University of Minnesota, it will hopefully be done at the end of this year. They're really doing due diligence, and it's out for peer review, even internationally, because this is a concern of a lot of places. Then we'll have the next phase, depending what that looks like. And this information, if you have that in your handout, or, yeah, in your handout from your board packet, those wakes are live, you can go to that page for more information. Oh, also, we're working with some, there probably will be some legislation related to wakes that will be presented, and I'll send those out at the email to let you know kind of where that's at. We're working with some of the industry and the DNR for some of that. Unlawful charter operations, you heard a lot of feedback this year, because the lake's so busy, everyone is looking for ways to capitalize and make money, but sometimes it's not safe, or it takes up public resources from some of the cities. So, we worked with Water Patrol and created webpages for that, and we probably have about 19 in prosecution right now, and most of those were because they also had safety violations. So, it isn't just a matter of, you know, doing business, and so I think we'll see a lot of improvement, and maybe some changes. We're going to review it, it's just we had so much happen this summer that we had to look at, here's our code, we're going to enforce that now, and then look at it next year, and how maybe we can make it even better for all parties. And dock reconfigurations, we've worked with some of your staff on, you know, some concerns neighbors had, or a few applications that were banned, so I think for the most part, we spent a lot of time technically solving the problems, and hopefully, maybe so people can enjoy the lake. And our new website, again, take a look at that, the new lakeshore owner section is huge. It includes things that also are intended to help protect the lake, or to get people to the resources quicker, and we have contact, so they know who to call, when, we'll still help with referrals, but that's been kind of big on our communications. I think that's pretty much it for some of the main things. Starting off with AIS, a couple of years ago, we looked at kind of the strategy in our base. So, next year, you'll see Spine Waterplane, we're going to have a neat Swedish dish cloth that will be handed out later. We also have, a couple of years ago, we had a big island outbreak, you know, a lot of people sick, we had a lot of calls for that. We had actually planned on already sanitizing, not realizing that COVID was coming, so we didn't have some of the issues. People were really good about, you know, trying to maintain the distances. So, this year, for how many people were out there, overall, was, we're pretty happy. The BUIs were up quite a bit, so we're seeing that now, probably, we had about 30 some versus three. So, there are still a few incidents that, you know, you need to address, and we work with cities and different parties. But again, for the most part, considering how busy it has been, summer and winter, I think just really happened for the cooperation. We're just, because of the last couple of years for winters, some of the things you'll be seeing is that we're doing kind of a more spearheaded campaign on keep your, you know, whatever you take on the ice, take off. Last year, staff and I spent several hours trying to clean out styrofoam, those little styrofoam pellets, horrible. So, anyway, I'd like to allow that, I will see what comes up. But, yeah, so a lot of that, we really do want to make sure that people take whatever they put on the lake out with them, and not store it on the adjacent property, so you'll see some of that coming out this year, too.
Well, every season, there's a lot of activity for Vicky and her staff. Here, it's docks that are looking to be bubbled, to have open water around them, so we have various kinds of rulings around making sure that's safe, untransfencing inspections and so on, it takes up a lot of time this time of year. Springtime, new docks going in, changes, new dock configurations and so on, which is lots of detailed work that is probably not all about this.
All the extremes, do high water one year, low water next year, winds blowing on itself, we have the ability to.
So, I just have a question, if I could. We have heard from our representative regarding the Cedar Point channel, and we were very supportive of making that a slow wake zone. Where are we at with that? Because we, all of our, we did, there was a survey done, and our residents, anyway, in Minnetrista, were very much in favor of that, and we were also shown a map where there's another access immediately adjacent to it, where people can go faster if they so wish. So, we haven't really heard anything. What's, where are we at in the process for that?
So, this summer, I went out on several weekends and did observations. I don't tell people I'm coming, I'm in Carmelo, so I can see kind of what's happening. We were out there a couple of times, thanks to your director, Assistant, so I will be compiling a lot of that information. We had a lot of requests for slow, no wakes zones, especially the last couple of years. We'll look at it a couple of different ways, but we'll present a report, kind of the findings. There were a couple scary incidents, and then we'll look at where there are reported accidents, we'll get feedback from Water Patrol, from Hampton County, yeah, so we'll look for something more formal, and I think we have pictures and even some video.
Okay, well, hopefully, we can prevent an accident versus waiting for one to happen? So, all right, thank you. All right. Thank you very much, we really appreciate, and Mike, appreciate your time and expertise in this, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next, we have Senator Osmik with us this evening for a brief, or for a presentation. Welcome, Mr. Osmik, or Senator Osmik.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Chair, Mayor, I'm sorry to keep falling back to my Senate, Senate experiences. Could be with you tonight, I'll give you a little background on me, because I know, you guys know who I am, but you guys are relatively new. I don't have business cards, and I'll explain that a little bit later. I was born and raised in Glencoe. For my first 18 years, I lived on my parents' farm, which I still own 40 acres of as of today, and have planned to for a very long time. Graduating from Glencoe High School, I actually lost to a Mount football, although they're playing very well now. I actually lost in the 80s to a Mount football team, which was not easy, because they weren't necessarily, they're all that good back then, so.
They are now.
But now.
Now, they're good.
They are very good now, in their class, so. So, I moved to Mound, and it was an opportunity to be appointed to fill a seat for a partial term on the Mound City Council. I was appointed and served there for almost 12 years, at which point I was elected to the Senate, I've been there now for nine years. This year, I have a few committee changes, this is my third term, it's a short term, we're up for reelection next year because of redistricting. I serve on the Government Operations and Elections Committee. I serve on Transportation, which is one of my passions. I also serve on a Subcommittee on Technology, and I also have the gavel for the Subcommittee on Metropolitan Governance, though I might hold a meeting, and I won't hold a meeting, because right now, we don't have a lot of changes in that council that I can foresee that the Governor and the other body are interested in. I've always been, and I've been here before, talking about my council plan to try and make them more accountable to local jurisdictions, which would be that you folks would have to actually put, present a resolution of support for your appointed careerman council representative, for them to actually to be seated at some point in time, sort of a registration program. That hasn't gotten any likes at the legislature, as a lot of things do at the legislature, they don't so, sometimes go pretty far. In the legislative session, I'll tell you, I will grade it a good D+. It was not a very good legislative session, in my opinion, for a number of reasons. There were a number of bills that I felt weren't in the best interest of Senate District 33. I'll point to one issue in particular. There's something called the Rondo Land Bridge, I'm not sure if you know about it. This is something that we said no in committee, we said no in the Senate, and in the last two days of the special session, it suddenly mysteriously showed up in the tax bill, actually showed up in the jobs bill. It was out of the jobs bill, and then came back like a bad sequel in the tax bill, that's what happens when you're dealing with ominous bills. The, for those of you who don't know what the Rondo Land Bridge is, it was $6 million, which doesn't sound like a lot of money. In the grand scheme of 50-some billion that we spend in the state, of state money alone, not including the federal money that we spend, it is not a ton of money, but it is for committee outreach and planning to put a park over I-94 between Lexington and downtown, downtown St. Paul. It's not the $6 million that necessarily drove me crazy, it's the billion dollars that that is going to actually become, because the estimates aren't over a billion dollars to put this in. And I understand that back in the 60s, there was the Rondo Neighborhood, we've heard a lot of discussion about that. I just don't see that as how Minnesotans want their taxpayer. And granted, it may be federal money, a billion dollars worth of federal money, but the last time I checked, that billion still comes for use somehow, and I didn't see that as a wise investment. I think there are so many other issues facing Minnesotans, that a billion dollars to put a park over the freeway isn't it. So, that's why I gave it a D+. Sometimes a C-, minus, I think it depends on the day that I'm on. Bills, I just want to briefly touch on one of my bills that I got passed, it was the first time out of the gates for this one. It was deemed by Senator Newman, the Chair of Transportation, as the most un-Osmic-Osmic bill of all time. And in nine years, I've had a few bills, but this one dealt with corrections, and it was so, it was very unusual for me, because I don't delve into that area, I'm far more on transportation, energy policy issues, that kind of thing. This was brought to me by a friend of mine that I actually grew up in high school with. He works, I worked in Minnesota, he's now moved to Florida. He worked with felons that were exiting prison, state prisons, and he talked to me about how they're having difficulties reintegrating into society. And I said, how so? Well, he says, when people leave, there's no set rules or set take-home, for lack of a better term, take-home sheet, you know, when kids come home for the weekend, or whatever they have a folder, take-home folder, of everything they need, or the projects, or whatever the case might be. There's no consistent pattern or consistent methodology for when people leave incarceration in the state of Minnesota. So, I talked to him about what was needed, and the first thing was, well, they don't usually have a picture ID. They need to have a picture ID in order to do any number of things, you know, cashing a check. So, we put that in statute, saying, when they leave incarceration, if they need it, we will plan ahead, because you know, three or four months advance, you know when they're leaving incarceration. So, make sure they have a picture ID the day they leave. Where's your social security card? Don't know, lost it three, four, or five years ago, they had it someplace, can't find it, they need it for a job, how are they going to get a job without a social security card? So, we tell corrections, you have to plan ahead, make sure that we give them paperwork, helping through the process of getting a copy of their social security card. This isn't rocket science. Those type of things. The last thing that we put on it was for somebody who needs medications, non-narcotic medications. If you're on something, heart medication, antipyretics, and you are diagnosed in prison, and you're receiving them, you usually get what's called a bubble card, and every day you pop the bubble, or whatever, ten times each day, pop the bubble, eat the pill. But when you leave incarceration before this pill, you get whatever was left on that card, and you leave. Now, we will send you home with what's currently on that card, give you another month's prescription to take with you, again, non-narcotics, you can't go onto the street and sell it and do anything with it, as well as a prescription for another month beyond that, and your medical records, so that you don't have to be worrying about, where am I going to get that medication from? Whole point of this is so that guys like him don't have people getting back into trouble for something that is relatively easy to fix. If we can, the cost on this is about $120,000 a year, chump change. You guys, $120,000 is big. The state of Minnesota, very inexpensive, well worth it, two people not going, out of the thousands that come out, roughly. If we can save two people from going back in, that saves the money, and it doesn't send them back through that guy with the gun. We want people, as I said when I presented the bill, we want people to be taxpayers, because they're productive, contributing to society, they're not a burden, I want more of those. That was sort of strange, because the folks on the other side of political life would say, you want more taxpayers? Yes, I do, for that reason. Lastly, the reason I don't have business cards is because about two weeks ago, my caucus put me forth as the next president of the Minnesota Senate, in the process of getting new cards. What that means is I'm the operations manager of the Senate. It's, a lot of people will look at that, the political power in the Senate resides with the majority leader. In the House, sort of a civics lesson, in the House, the Speaker is the political leader of the body, but in the Senate, it's the majority leader. The President is the operations manager, to make sure bills are referred properly, actions take place in proper sequence, make sure you rule and run the Senate floor according to customs and traditions, that kind of thing. So, it's an honor, I'll be the 14th Senator, to be President of the Senate, I think, I have a really dramatic, you've already given me the keys to my new office, which, by the way, if you come down, I'd love to show it to you, this, now that we rehabbed the entire Capitol, it really is a very special place. And it's my honor to serve not only as your Senator, but also now as the President of the Senate, and I will now answer any question you happen to have on your mind, if I can't answer it, I will come back to you. If you ask me a question on natural resources or something, I'm not on the committee, like wake, you know, there is possibly some legislation on wake, boat wakes coming, but it's not something that I'm necessarily pretty to at this point in time, because it's in a committee that I'm not necessarily working on. So, with that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Council members, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Senator Osmik, and congratulations. Just one point or comment, I had recently, a couple of years, last year, or the year before, the opportunity actually visit the prison in Stillwater, and we met, it was a number of mayors, and we met actually with some of the individuals there, and one of the things they were saying, so I think, I applaud your efforts, but one of the things, the biggest thing that they were saying is, they leave there with $500 in their pocket, and no work, and very difficult to find a job, and so I can understand their struggles, if they, if you want to make them tax, of course, we want them to be tax productive taxpayers and not go back to jail, but, so the medication helps, and all of that helps, but if there's some way of providing them a little more substantial support where they can get jobs, that would be, that would be a big help, and it would help society, too, especially the neighborhoods that they go back into, which unfortunately is sometimes not so good, so.
There are some additional corrections, things that I'm going to be working on, increasing that, I'm not sure how I can necessarily get it past some members of my own caucus, but I will say this, is there's a lot of times where they go in, and fines and fees aren't waived when they, when you go into prison in Minnetonka, child support, and if you're in prison, generally speaking, you're not making any money while you're in prison. One of the efforts I'm going to be looking at is, can we suspend or hold, you know, add on at the end, but if you have a 10-year repayment on something that you have to do, that you just move to 10 years, so that you aren't racking up fines and fees, which again, goes to what you're just talking about, is that financial obligation when they're incarcerated. But I do know what you need about trying to get them jobs, and that's why getting them those picture IDs, the social security card, tries to help the situation. It's not a perfect world.
Exactly.
But it's a good start.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I agree, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And of course, you know where to contact me, if you need any help.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. All right. With that, that concludes our special presentations, and we'll move on to persons to be heard. Steve Decolios, regarding water infrastructure, three minutes.
Oh, I'll take three minutes.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Decolios, I live at 5415 Yellowstone Trail in Minnetrista. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and mayor and staff for the opportunity to tour the Southbound Treatment Facility this afternoon. tour the South Water Treatment Facility this afternoon. Really an amazing process and amazing facility. Just two questions, I'm not expecting answers tonight, but I know we've talked about the South Treatment Facility efficiency evaluation, I just was curious as to when that might be completed. And my second question is when the Southwest Water Tower will be completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Southwest Water Tower, do we have a staff update later on?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Well, this is again, I believe like last month, generally, we plan these meetings to be after.
Yeah.
The council meeting, or before the council meetings, but in the last two months, they've been after.
So, at our next meeting.
The following meeting will give you an update, but.
Should be.
I do know that, I know I've been talking with Gary over the last number of weeks, there was a little bit of concern about the painting, but I think they've been tracking pretty well. They had one day, I think, delay in the delivery of their paint, and this is not like paint you can get at.
Hardware store, yeah.
So, I mean, this is special paint, so it passes all the tests when you actually put water in it and stuff, you know, the tank tower, so. So, they're working on that, but I won't have an update until Wednesday, so we'll have to update you on the next meeting, but I'll have something at the end of the meeting about the dedication. I think we're getting pretty darn close. I mean, I don't think. The only thing, I think we're waiting, I think there's, might be still some supply chain things with some of the skater-related things.
Correct.
But that, that's been something we've known about, that's not unknown, but I think as far as work goes, I think they're finishing up. So, hopefully, we can get to our dedication ceremony in about four weeks. Could be done, could be outlined, but I don't know, but we'll give you more specific information, but it's coming soon.
And in answer to your other question, the answer is, we don't know.
Yeah, and something we'll be working on, so.
All right. So, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda items. I would like to pull the work session meeting minutes from October 18th, 2021. Other than that, are there any you wish to remove? If not, we have a lengthy consent agenda item, and I will, items, I will read them. We have approval of our special meeting minutes from October 18th, 2021. Then we move on to C, which is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 18th, 2021. And then we have, D is a resolution to approve claims. E is a resolution to approve a lake shore setback variance at 2632 Saunders Lake Drive North. F is a resolution to approve a lake shore setback variance at 3720 Lee Road in Minnetrista. And G is to accept the improvements and authorize final payment of the Sunnyfield Water Tower rehabilitation. Yay, finally done. H is a resolution to accept the St. Boniface proposed fire service pension increase for 2022. And I is a land conveyance agreement to Three Rivers Park District. J is a resolution to approve organics drop-off grant agreement with Hennepin County. K is a drainage easement agreement between the city, Crane Island Association, and Palmer Point Homeowners Association. And that's it. So, we are approving A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K. Is there a motion to approve those consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I just want to go to page six. Hold on. And it states under number three, under the sewer fund budget discussion, it says, "Council and staff discussed the amount of increase in other options for funding the sewer fund activities. The consensus of the city council seemed to be to increase the quarterly rate by $2 to $3 a quarter." I don't think we said we were in agreement with that. My recollection was that we weren't going to increase it right now, and staff was going to bring back a spreadsheet and also then a fund balance policy.
Yes.
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So, I think, so we need to just remove, "The consensus of the city council seemed to be to increase the court," just remove that sentence. Discuss the amount of increase and other options for funding the sewer fund activities. And then it says, "We discussed, looked to a fund balance policy for the water," so that would be fine. So, I think that, just that last sentence needs to be removed.
We can make that change.
Counsel, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. I had no other comments for that then. With that then, I will make a motion to approve those meeting minutes with that correction.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson, made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, we'll move on to our public hearings. We have a vacation of a portion of the road leading to Gale Woods Regional Park as requested by Three Rivers Park District. Is, who's doing this one? David?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, this actually came up a couple of years ago as the council was working through your road maintenance fund and potential projects. I believe it was actually a mill and overlay that was being proposed on this section on your screen for the entrance to the Gale Woods Regional Park. When that got brought up, the idea of vacating that easement and giving that entrance back to, giving it to Three Rivers Park District was brought up by our council. We engaged in some conversations with Three Rivers, and things kind of went by the wayside there for a while, but with recent activities, some of which are on your agenda here earlier on the consent agenda, we were able to come to some understanding with Three Rivers Park District's staff, and they are in agreement to go ahead and have the city vacate that section of roadway so that it will be now turned over to Three Rivers Park District for them to maintain some plow and take over maintenance of such. It is common that Three Rivers does own and maintain entrances to their regional parks, so it's something that made sense. So, like we do with other vacations of roadway, right-of-ways, we've provided notice to all adjacent property owners. We've published a public hearing. You need to hold that public hearing this evening, close the hearing, and then we do have a resolution before you for consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Abell. Any questions, council of staff? All right. So, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. If there's anybody that wishes to speak for or against or make comments regarding the vacation of this roadway, you may do so at this time. There is nobody here for that public hearing, so I will close the public hearing and take it back to council. This is a good thing, we don't have to maintain their entrance road. So, is there a motion to approve vacating a portion of the road, basically portion of the road?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Is there a private residence as you first turn in there? Is there a private residence on the north side?
That's owned by the Three Rivers Park District.
That does, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was, thanks.
Yeah, one of their employees, I think, actually lives there.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, with that then, any other questions? Good. Is there a resolution for vacating a portion of the road leading, well, actually, it's all of the road leading to the Gale Woods Regional Park? It would be that section of County Road 110 West.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpolin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So, we will move on to our business items. Our first business item is approve a change order and extend contract completion date for the 21 street project, I believe, Ms. Vowsky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As council may be aware, the local street improvement project is very close to completion. However, the contractor has been unable to meet the specific requirements for final completion, and as such is requested, I'm sorry, not final, substantial completion. And with that, has asked for an extension to November 5th. So, we wanted to bring this to council for consideration. The contractor has been making progress. The remaining work for Minneapolis is the final lift of pavement. The final lift of pavement has gone on all the other roads, Loring, Stone Bridge, and Hardscrabble. Just out there, actually, between recess of the work session and their, the subcontractor for restoration was out there, getting some seed on some of those exposed areas. So, they are coming very close, but we are request, the contractor has requested and we are recommending extending that substantial completion date to November 5th.
Thank you. And the substantial just basically means that second or final wear course?
Correct.
Okay. And it won't get too late in the season?
That's an excellent question, Madam Mayor, council. With the colder weather that we've encountered as of late, the contractor submitted a cold weather paving plan to ensure that the product that the city receives is in good condition given the cooler temperatures, so we are comfortable with what they presented.
What do they have to do, like put down heated?
Well, they certainly cover, they cover the, they cover the load when it comes in. There's, it doesn't stay once it pours out of the back of the truck. They're rolling it a little bit faster, making sure that the temperature of the mix itself isn't getting cooled, so variable to do this. This is something similar that was done.
Enchanted.
On the enchanted project.
And then they had multiple trucks lined up to go right away and, yeah, okay. Have we had any problems with enchanted?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay, all right.
And that adds cost, so I'm assuming that they take care of the cost and doesn't add to our budget or?
We, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Mortenson. There's, there's no additional cost to the city for any accommodations that the contractor has to make to, to do the cold weather operations.
Okay, good.
Are they going to be able to get this done this week?
Yes, they actually, in the past week, they, they've had significant progress. And like I said, the remaining significant portion of the substantial completion is that second layer of asphalt on Minneapolis. So, they were, I believe they were on Saturday paving, so they're, they're certainly putting the hours in.
Are you supposed to wait a certain amount of time between the initial and then the final wear course?
I believe so, but I don't have those dates at the top.
I mean, will we have enough separation?
Correct.
Okay. And then they finished Hardscrabble and Loring and Stone Bridge?
Correct.
And will you go out and just check on Hardscrabble, what I talked to you about earlier?
Certainly, yes. Take a look at where some of those teams came together.
All right, thank you. All right. Anything else? Otherwise, extend the contract completion date to November 5th? Will that give them enough time?
That's what they've indicated here.
All right, all right, that's what they want.
We wanted to keep it, we wanted to keep everything in the contract.
Yeah.
According to council approvals, so.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then there's the other change order extending the utility project. This is also Minneapolis Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Yes, this is correct. This is the utility project for the work that is to be completed on Minneapolis Avenue associated with the lift station. So, this is the second change order that has to do with extending the substantial completion dates. Similar to the first time we brought this to council, there has been supply chain issues with, with this project. The good news is, from the time that this report was written to today, the contractor did receive the lift station panel. So, they, they do have some of the lift station panel work installed, but it's still not complete. They still have some antenna work to do, you know, go through all the debugging, so to speak, of the new lift station panel and get the, everything switched over to that, to the new system. And as such, the contractor has requested an extension of the substantial completion date to November 30th in order to complete that. The work, really, the work that they've done past their original completion date, to my knowledge, hasn't affected the street improvement project. All this work has occurred off of the street section, and so they just, there's, there's nothing from a material standpoint where the cold weather will affect them. It's just a matter of getting everything rigged up there and ready to go, so.
Okay.
Staff is recommending approval of the contractor's request to extend that substantial completion date.
Okay, thank you. Council, questions? All right. Is there a motion then to approve the letter? I'm sorry, that's a different one. Approve the change order number three and extend the contract completion date for the 21 utility project.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumpolin. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Next, we move on to the letter of agreement with the executive firm, Baker Tilly, and to perform the city administrator's search.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On with the announcement of Mike Barone's retirement at the September 20th city council meeting, the council directed staff to obtain proposals for an executive search firm to conduct the city administrator hiring process. At the special meeting on October 18th, the city council interviewed three firms, and at the regular meeting on October 18th, the council directed staff to negotiate the price and an inclusion of a six-month review with Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly has accepted these terms and provided a letter of engagement for city council to approve tonight, and following their approval, I will begin coordinating the process with them.
Thank you. And you were able to twist the arm, right?
Oh, yes. Kind of hard bargain.
Yes. Questions, council? Did you talk to them, so when would be the first time that they would start? I mean, now that we've signed the contract, then they start immediately, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
The schedule begins this week, so.
Okay.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow, let them know it was approved, and then they'll probably lay out a more detailed schedule for me.
Okay.
To get in contact with you all and.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. City council will be interviewed, each one of us in budget, correct?
Yes. I don't know if that will be via phone call or if they'll actually come on site, but I'll coordinate that with Baker Tilly. Yep.
Okay. And just for a time element, could we get the questions in advance that they're going to be asking us?
Sure, yeah. Because I think they'll ask about what you see for the position to create the brochure and the profile.
Yeah.
Yep, I can ask them for that. Hopefully, they're able to, but I definitely will.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Would you see these interviews for the council being this week yet or next week?
I don't know that.
When you talk to them, maybe just then send us, can you send the council the schedule then?
Yep.
If they, as soon as you get it or as soon as they can put it together?
Yep, I have, I asked them for an updated schedule based on approval of today, so I'll send that out, I can send that out tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Because I have that.
And then, any other questions?
I don't know if you want me to bring it, no. All right, my question is, we are doing this process, and it sounds like we're going to probably have somebody in place by March. Mike is leaving on December 17th, so we have a lapse time, and I'm just wondering, what are we doing in that in-between time to fill in Mike's position?
So, it'll probably be about eight, eight to 10 weeks, maybe?
I don't know if you want to take that?
Obviously, that's going to be up to what the council wants to do. You could appoint somebody currently on staff as an interim. I think that, or just rely on the general expertise of all of the department directors that we have here. They're all very capable people. We kind of operate that way in general. I mean, I don't feel like I'm fearless leader here, you know, I probably, we're a big team, and we've worked that way ever since I've been, ever since I got here. I mean, I can't really imagine any other way that we've operated. So, I mean, that would be something that you guys would have to decide and do. But the one thing I would not recommend is to go find somebody from the outside by the time they got here and just figure out how to adjust the chair in the office, it's going to be, they're going to be hiring somebody, so I think you're better off.
Unless we hit a snag in the process.
Yeah, yeah.
And don't find anybody, but.
I can't imagine you won't.
I don't think so.
Well, maybe, maybe what we should do is bring it back at the works, at the next work session, because I think it merits some, some thought and some discussion.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. Okay. Did we make the motion then and approve this?
We did not.
Okay. We've been in meetings since 3 o'clock, so I'm getting a little.
I'll move fast.
So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the letter of engagement with the executive search firm, Baker Tilly, and Baker Tilly to perform the city administrator's search.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ann, Ms. McGregor.
More she doing?
Yeah, okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. And next, we'll move on to the employee assistance program through Sun Life.
That is me again?
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Minatrista's current health insurance provider does not offer an employee assistance program and hasn't since 2019. The city's previous providers did include an employee assistance program benefit. And staff wishes to bring this benefit back to employees. An employee assistance program is a voluntary work-based program that offers free and confidential assessments, short-term counseling, referrals, and follow-up services to employees who, who have personal or work-related problems. Staff obtained two proposals from providers and recommends enrolling in an EAP through Sun Life. Sun Life also currently provides our long-term, short-term disability benefit and life insurance. The cost for this program is 85 cents per employee per month. And with this, employees have access to three face-to-face visits with an experienced clinician per occurrence. And attachment aid displays a little bit more information about the program. This would be an employer-paid benefit of $387.60 per year for all 38 employees.
Thank you. I think it's a good program. Basically, you know, there's a lot of talk about wellness in the workplace and, and providing your employees all the tools that they, they might need. So I think for the price, it's, it's well worth it. So that's my opinion. So. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, then is there a motion to approve the employee assistance program through Sun Life?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperton. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And next, we're going to talk about our water education and conservation campaign.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is going to be kind of a group effort. I'm going to start off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ally, and we'll ask Allison to chime in wherever she feels appropriate. What you have in your packet is basically just a game plan. And the game plan is, based on the occurrences we had this past summer with our outdoor watering ban in June and July with the drought situation that we had, a number of things came to light. And one of the things we want to do is to educate our residents and talk to them directly through some mailings about what they can do in a number of different areas. So as the council saw today, you know, there's a lot that goes into a water treatment plant, but that's kind of one aspect of the overall process that gets water into people's homes. So we want to talk a little bit about the items that you see based on a monthly basis, whether it's infrastructure, supply, water usage, metering, lawn irrigation, and those kind of things. So we feel like it's a worthwhile endeavor. And what we found out this summer is that a lot of people, until essentially this big it got turned off, didn't really know a lot about these things. And I remember numerous, hearing Ally tell numerous residents when they were calling about the depth of water in the tower and stuff like that, and all the things that we got to think about that went into that decision to have that outdoor watering ban. So, so I'll let Ally kind of go through each month that comprise and what we hope to accomplish in each one. And then, like I said, Allison, if you've got some nuggets that you want to throw in, feel free to do so. So Ally?
Sure, yeah. So I'll just run through every month and go through what we're doing as a mail-out and also what the city council decisions that will have to be made. So in November, we're kind of doing the rollout with the newsletter and posting on social media. So let that residents know that they will be receiving a monthly mailing about water and infrastructure. And then in December of this year, we'll begin our first mailing with the past, what's happened in the past and the history of the water infrastructure, what current infrastructure we have, and any other general history about our water infrastructure that we want residents to know. At the work session in December, we also want to review and discuss some ordinance language change, such as, you know, sod laid between certain dates, a soil depth inspection and such. Councilmember Chumperton pointed out an error in my memo. It should be code 500.23. So that was a typo. In January 2022, we'll talk about Minatrista's specific water supply, how it gets from the aquifier to the well to the tower to the home, because I don't think people generally know that information. Discuss the difference between treated and untreated water, and explain what Mike had said, the thresholds in the water tower. And then at the work session, we'll continue the discussion of the city code section changes and begin discussing the tiered water rate structure. In February, we'll kind of go over what we experienced in 2021, the weather, the excess usage, the water tower levels. That's what we're explaining, the DNR peak factor and what it means for us. We'll discuss the allocation and any potential consequences of going over that allocation. And then I have in my plan to send a separate mailing to the high users in 2021 at that time, since we'll have a full year of usage by that point in our billing system. And then at the February meeting, I hope to, that we can approve the city code section changes if there are some, and continue discussing the tiered waters, water rate structure, and also possibly have a potential speaker from the DNR. In March, this is where we're going to provide a.
You forgot the neighborhood meeting?
Yes.
Okay, in April?
I did write a note to add that.
It's in our packet.
Okay, it's not on my plan here.
The idea there was if, you know, we had a number of people that contacted us, whether it was emails or telephone calls or both, with complaints about the outdoor watering. And what we want to do for that is to kind of target those people and see if they'd be interested in learning a little bit more about this topic. And whether it's an open house or whatever format of your choosing is going to be. But I think it would be beneficial for especially the people that took the time to say what's going on. I remember emailing back a bunch of them. Some got very nice replies, thanks, you're doing a great job. Some were like, what the hell, I want to water my lawn, you know? So I had everything in between. So I think it would be worthwhile to have some interaction face-to-face with people. And then, as Ally mentioned, it would hopefully include a representative from the DNR that would be able to talk about those things. So, so Ally, if you want to continue with March and April?
Thanks, thank you. Yeah. In March of 2022, this is where we would have our water meter and lawn information. So picture, video on how residents can read their water meter compared to the previous year. Discussion on how much people's lawns need, how much water they need, and a possible implementation of an irrigation assessment program where public works employees, or people can call our public works department and have them come on-site to see if their irrigation is efficient or not. And then as far as city council items, continue the discussion of a water rate structure and hopefully approve a new water rate structure and amend this, amend the fee schedule if needed. And then the final month of this campaign is April 2022. This is where we'll really tap into, or relay information about water conservation and what the summer water restrictions will be for the summer. And then at that time, I also hope to get some monthly high-usage notification mailings out to residents so we can run a report every month of the summer and send high users notifications, because it's quarterly billing. So I thought it's important that residents know if they're using a lot of water at the time they are. So that's just a brief overview and obviously subject to change, but I don't know, Allison, if you've got anything to add?
No, I think, you know, Mike and Ally put a lot of work into this and, you know, look forward to council's feedback as far as timeline and content so that we can move forward with something.
I think it's, it's good. I, I had suggested the neighborhood meeting. So I think sometimes face-to-face interaction with residents is, is better, is, is really good, rather than just always just emails or just always mailing. So I think that's an important key component of this. I know it means an extra meeting for all of us, but I think it's important. Otherwise, I think they did an excellent job. I really do. A lot of thought and time will go into this. So that's one thing the council has to understand. But I think it's important, and I think it will be good for our residents, too.
I think it'll be good to have the discussion or multiple on the tiered water rates. I mean, we have the water rate tiered structure, but we just haven't really probably tweaked it other than raising all rates 4% the last, you know, separate, knowing that, you know, with all the infrastructure we're doing, we've had to increase rates, but maybe there's a, a better way or we should be doing it as far as especially encouraging conservation if the tiered rates at the higher end got to be a higher increase or something. That's, I guess, for council to discuss.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that.
I think one of the keys is that you're contacting the high-water users quickly. So I think Kathleen, you had mentioned that. People get their quarterly bill and they're like, oh my God.
Yeah.
And I think if they were notified ahead of time, it's, you know, I think they would change the usage if they knew ahead of time.
I agree.
Just because of the cost in itself.
How many gallons are we considering notifying after?
Well, I think we're considering the DNR threshold for, or peak factor as kind of a cutoff point to notify users.
Yeah, I think that's a 2.6 peaking factor that the DNR stipulates is a kind of a sweet spot for residents. So if they're substantially above that, they're going to get a letter and say you're in that category where you're watering kind of maybe more than you should. And it's going to take some examination of all the accounts, because we do have some people who really aren't here in the winter. And so their water usage is really small. So it doesn't take a, you know, you turn on the faucet for a couple of days and maybe pass your peaking factor if you're a snowbird. So we're going to have to make sure we look at that and not penalize and piss people off that are just snowbirds and they don't really use that much. So, so we might have to draw some assumptions, like the average amount of water that people would use in a winter if you're a normal household, and make that the baseline for those people. And then look at their data, so to speak, and see if they cross the threshold. So. But there's always extenuating circumstances. So, you know, it's, it's not going to be perfect, but I think just the fact that the, the volume that they're using or that's going through their house, I think is going to be good information for them to kind of key in on. So.
Well, I think it's important, too, for us to look at maybe an ordinance about when, when sod can go down and when it can't. You know, that, because sod takes an enormous amount of water. It really does. So maybe if they can't sod after June 15th or something like that.
And so, you know, if we've looked at that, we'll get into more details, but you're right, Mayor, that, you know, we have some competing ordinances. Well, one had to do with the temp CO thing we had a couple of years ago, where we're telling people, put your sod down. And then this past year, we say, don't put your sod down. I mean, so we've got to kind of weigh all of that. And that's why we're starting with the ordinances, because there are some things that are a little bit in competition with each other. We want to make sure they all line up and everybody's comfortable. And then if you do need some sort of legal look at it, Rod's office would be able to take a peek at that and get that ready. So the goal here is, as it mentioned in the memo, I mean, you've got builders, developers, homeowners, sod layers, city staff. I mean, there's a lot of people that kind of all need to be on the same page. So we're starting with the ordinances to make sure they line up. And, because we did get some pushback this year when we told people, stop on the sod. And they said, oh, I've already got it ordered, you know? So, okay, we'll give you an exception.
But if they know ahead of time, yeah.
If they know ahead of time, they won't have that excuse. So.
So the only other thing is you, you talk in fiscal impact, city staff, and we work together, blah, blah, blah. The marketing, so you said 500 per month for the, the cost to print them, I'm assuming?
So that's the cost to generate the mailing?
Right.
So Allison's time and her graphics team gathering information, that sort of thing.
Okay. And then, then there's the printing, which is, it says postage and mailing is 1,000. But is it, is that include the printing?
No.
Okay, so.
Oh, wait, wait. So there's like the marketing cost, the graphics, putting it together, gathering our information, that's 500.
Right.
And then the actual printing, mailing, postage?
That's 1,000.
Yes. And this is all approximate. I didn't ask for a quote, but I went off of our newsletter.
Yeah, it looks about right to me. So it's about 1,500 a month, and we're looking at taking that out of, obviously, out of the water fund. So, just so we're.
And then the other thing that's not in here, because it's going to frankly take too long to explain, is we, as you see in the November one, we're combining that with the Minatrista messenger.
Right.
We may try to do that again at some point in time, you know, if every March, whatever works. Maybe just make a larger Minatrista messenger that would have the pages for this, so we don't have to do postage twice or.
Yep.
Something like that. So, I mean, that's an option for us as well.
Okay. So the question on cost, so we're looking at almost every month you're doing something. So it's like six months, so we're going to be doing six mailings, maybe a couple less, at $1,500 per mailing.
So around $9,000, $10,000?
It might be a little less, like you said, if we.
Yes.
If we put the two, combine, let's say, two of the Minatrista messengers, so.
Right.
A little less.
Hopefully, we get the benefit back tenfold. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, right. So roughly eight, eight to 10?
Yeah, this is, this is quite a project that we're biting off here, but I think it's going to be worthwhile. We hope it pays off for everybody that's seated here and our residents. So.
And staff, and staff's time, because they took an enormous amount of time this summer. But here's the other thing. I was thinking about the test wells that were authorized. The three of us had fun here. Anyhow, we authorized the test wells and they're going to be done. But if we have to go to the DNR for permission, this is a great, I think, just a great example of what we're doing to educate our residents, because that might be one thing that they ask. And I don't, I don't know of any other city that has done this good of a job. So I think we'll be sitting in a good spot.
Yeah, you look at the peaking factor data, and it's, can be hard to find, but it's there in other cities. I haven't seen any as high as ours.
Ours, ours is pretty high. It's pretty high.
You're exactly right, Mayor, that we are going to get that question, what are you doing to curtail your city's usage?
Yeah.
The fact that we've got this plan to do that, I think, is going to help us hopefully with siding wells and.
And the newspaper coverage that we get in The Laker, is that something we initiate or is that something that they listen to our meetings and?
This particular subject, they've been reaching out to us.
Yeah. And, and they're more than happy. I mean, they're not going to do our stuff for free or anything, but, you know, obviously, we can work with them, because we have in the past with doing press releases and stuff to.
Because during the campaign, a lot of people said they read The Laker all the time. And so I think we're going to have greater articles throughout the campaign.
They've been asking us, so we're excited about that.
You can do news, press releases.
They pick them up and print.
They, they may or may not print them.
They generally do.
They, they generally do, but sometimes they don't, but generally they do.
I think that's a particular topic.
Yeah.
You write a press release for them, they'll print it because they don't have to write it.
They don't have to write it. There you go.
That's true.
Ready for print.
All right.
How up to date are the addresses that get the newsletter?
Well, so there's a difference between the ones that get the newsletter and the ones on city water supply. So I have them pull the list of all the residents right before I mail out. So all of them will get the first newsletter. The ones on city water supply will get the campaign mailings.
Right. I know, I just know there's people in the neighborhood that don't always get the newsletter, so I just want to make sure.
Oh, really?
You pull it, like the little address list, but to date before.
Yeah, yeah. We pull it, we, like the week of, so.
Exactly.
Right from our utility billing system.
Yeah, yeah. And they can always come by and pick one up, too. We already, we always print a bunch here. But yeah, everyone who's a resident on file should get one.
All right.
I just have one other thing. As far as keeping the city council updated, Ally, would you be doing updates monthly on this?
I definitely can. Well, I think it'll be a discussion at most of the work sessions, so I can provide a little update. Definitely.
So are you planning on doing this kind of like broadband, where we have a, is it like the first meeting every month? Or is it the second meeting?
I think we've got it spelled out in our internal plan. It's either the first and second, depending on how long the topic's going to take from month to month. But you will get something at one of the work sessions every month. Don't, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Typically, the first. I'm hoping by the first, and then it gives us a little leeway if we don't have it by the second. But the mailing, the campaign mailing, I'm shooting for end of month to, for residents to receive it.
Okay. Sounds good. Do you need a motion for approval, just a nod of approval? I think everybody's on board. So great, great job. Thank you very much. I think it's excellent. So we'll move on to staff reports. City administrator?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So our next meeting is two weeks tonight, from tonight, Monday, November 15. I will actually be on vacation starting tomorrow. Tomorrow at this time, I'll have a nice drink in my hand down in Florida. So I'll be gone through November 12th. So I'll be back for the next council meeting. I wouldn't miss it. And then the final comment I have is that we've identified Tuesday, November 30th at 3:00 p.m. for the ribbon cutting slash dedication ceremony for the Southwest Water Tower. So it's Tuesday, November 30th, which would be four weeks from tomorrow, at 3:00.
So it's Tuesday, November 30th, which would be four weeks from tomorrow at 3:00 P. M. for the ribbon cutting dedication. So Ally will be sending out some information. I gave her, she was gone, I think, Friday, Thursday, Friday of last week. And so I sent her an email saying, your campaign kickoff, I'm putting that information out this, this week. So you probably will, you may see it in the paper this Friday, because their deadline is 10:00 a. m. tomorrow. Not sure he's going to get it ready by then, but for sure, the following, and that's still a full two weeks ahead of the day.
And hopefully, in the newsletter.
Yeah, and in the newsletter.
And you're saying 3:00, 3:00 P. M.?
3:00 P. M.
At, at the water tower site?
At the plant.
At the tower site?
At the tower.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. At the tower.
Y'all know where that is?
The big scissors again, ready to cut a ribbon, so.
Okay.
Need those big scissors, Allison.
It's going to be cold.
I need those scissors. I'll have hot chocolate on standby.
You will? Don't say that. Don't mean it.
Don't put that in the record.
All right.
Yeah, if there's mud out there, at least it'll be frozen, so.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I have, and Ms. Polfus has a few things.
I do. I'll make it quick. So after the sergeant position was posted internally for one week, we received two applications and held interviews. Justin Thompson emerged as a final candidate for this promotion, and we are continuing in the next steps in the process. So hopefully, it will be on your next agenda. It's contingent on his, on a psychological evaluation. And so we hope he gets promoted here and starts December with his transition. And then after the utility billing and recycling coordinator position was posted internally for a week, we received no application. So we will be going externally for that position. It'll, we'll probably post it for two weeks and then be updating the personnel committee on the next, next steps. And also, an update from MediaCom. I received a call from Zach that there will be 21 additional homes on Highland Road receiving service in 2022 at the so expensive-
On Highland or on Halsted?
Highland.
On Highland, okay.
Yep, and they'll kind of be in two separate groups. One will have conduit buried based on this current deed project. The ones, I think 11, will come later in the year. Apparently, Deed encouraged MediaCom to increase their fiber capacity for takeoff points for their next grant application. So they'll be adding these homes in 2022. I've not heard anything from Deed regarding the dates, first and middle. I-
Okay, so this is a new grant?
Nope. So the 21 homes, they can't use grant funds for it, but there are nodes, conduits that they can work off of for 21 homes that they are providing the fiber to the home. So it's not a part of the grant project, but there are surrounding homes to the grant project that they can service at their sole cost. Yep. And I think, I didn't get much information from Zach, but he said they were encouraged by Deed to do this to increase their odds of getting the next grant.
The next grant. Okay.
As takeoff points for the next 200 and some odd homes.
So when will they find out about the next Deed grant?
I don't know.
Because they were due in September.
I know. This is crazy.
I asked Deed directly to, we don't know. I'm imagining they'll be pushing off some middle dates till next year, so.
Okay. And have you contacted Hennepin County to see?
I contacted both Hennepin County and Dean Phillips' office, and they would both be, they're willing to lend support, but we're kind of waiting for this Deed application to see how much we're request, you know, I don't know what our request would be of them.
Okay.
But as far as dollars.
Okay.
But.
Oh, government, wait and wait.
Yes. But I'll provide an update when I hear more.
You get stuff done.
About the Deed grant. All right, thank you.
Yep, that's all I had.
Oh, I know. I was going to ask you. So then, when we, let's say, Thompson is then promoted to sergeant, would we have a swearing in of all of the officers that haven't been publicly sworn in?
Next meeting.
We're doing that next meeting? Will, will Justin be sworn in? Will he be?
I'm not sure. Well, he's already sworn in.
It's the three new ones. Justin's will have to be either December or January, once he's-
I'm not sure exactly what the ceremony is for a promotion.
His psychological exam would be after the swearing on the 15th, I believe.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, so Nikki Myrie, who was hired in-
I know that we have three, but-
Yeah, Jake, and then Spencer, who just started. So they're on the 15th.
I was just wondering-
The promotion would be contingent on a site.
Right.
And that would be done in time by the 15th, is what I'm hearing.
I just thought if we could do every, and I know he doesn't get sworn in again, but if it's just a promotional thing, kind of would be nice to recognize that, but-
All at once. We might just have to push it back then.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it December 6th, then?
Well, again, I don't, I think you might want to just do the three.
Do it separate? Okay.
Just in case something happens, we might as well get these three sworn in officially.
November 15th, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then, Allison, do you happen to know, on the test wells, are they good to go? Are they starting?
I'll get a, I'll get an update for a break. I didn't get a chance to ask him, but I know they were going through contracts last week, so we were getting pushed through so that they could get going.
Okay, thank you. All right. Council reports. We'll start with Kathleen.
I think we're through.
All right. I'm assuming you're going to the meeting on the 17th, the fire meeting?
Yeah, I said that, I said that two weeks ago. And I'm going to Ann's the next night, too.
Okay. And, good, thank you.
And Gillespie Center, the last board meeting of the year is Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Okay. And then right now, just so you know, they're running a sweepstakes. It's fairly expensive sweepstakes. It's $52 a ticket, but you get it for the whole year.
Okay.
52 weekly drawings.
That's what we get. Thanks for telling me.
And I never win, so.
I call one, two, three.
I'm here, Sarah Creek, attended on October 21st. We approved the third quarter budget numbers. They're basically in line. We're under on engineering costs. Not unexpected in Memphis is the first year that we had to hire an engineering firm, Hockenson, at market rates before we were using Hennepin County's expertise at a much lower value. And so we were kind of just ballparking numbers, and we're running under. So it's hard to say whether it's because we were off on our estimating or just the projects aren't incurring as many hours. We also, the commission approved two projects that we will be involved with spending. One is a channel that runs eventually, it's in Independence, and it runs towards Lake Independence. And it's eroding, heavily eroding, and so there's sediment that gets through the wetlands and gets into the Lake Independence. Hennepin County is the lead on this environmental. They've asked the watershed to kick in. 16,000 is coming out of funds that we had left from when we did a Baker Park stabilization. They did a large project there two years ago. There were funds left over from the grant we were given, and each year, we've been able to push the deadline out to the next December 31st. However, it's this December 31st, they're going to be gone, whether we use them or not. So we're being able to use about 16,600 of what we had, about 32,000 left. And then out of our own CIP, which we always will commit to 25%, but not greater than a certain number, we're committing another 6,000 there. And then there's a large watershed, sub watershed study being done. The land that runs between Lake Sarah and Lake Rebecca, the one big property owner that most you probably know is the Zera, can't even say it.
The Zera Shrine.
Zera Shrine people. There's, there's tile in there that have been, over the years, have been crushed or whatever. And so if you ever driven past there going up towards Rockford on the, in the spring, it's like a big lake down there. And so the water is backing up, and we know there's culverts that are plugged leading, leading to Lake Rebecca. So Hennepin County, again, is the lead on this. They're doing, they've hired a firm to do a best practice study and an assessment of what may need to be done. That's projected at being 68,000, of which the commission is committing 5,000 from CIP and 30,000 from grants that we've received. There's South Crow River grants that we've gotten some monies from. We're a small player, Pioneer Sarah Creek. When you talk about South Fork River, there's other very large watersheds. But, so we've got some funding there that we're putting towards that. So these are the two, we have not committed funds for a while here. There's been discussion in Hennepin County leads a lot of things to get landowners to buy in. That's the latest thing, is trying to get landowners to come forward to help, and then trying to get them to commit some of the money as well. So we've got money to spend, it's just finding the right projects to commit it to. So that was-
Good.
Good.
Yep. Sounds good.
WCC, I went to the meeting last week, and Senator Osmech was there and spoke for about, about exactly what I did here today. So, what else? The Santa Tour, highly successful, so they are doing it again. And it is, involves police and fire, and it's a big thing. And they are going to be visiting some neighborhoods within Minatrista. And it starts at 4:45 at the Mount Fire Department. It runs for two hours, it ends at the Veterans Memorial Park. And then the tree lighting starts at 6:30. So I'm leaving the poster, maybe if Ally or Don, and you can hang it up.
When is it?
It is November 20th. And that's it.
Okay. I don't know if I had meetings. Three Rivers Park District will potentially be here, their representative. At our December meeting, she's hoping to be here for, under special presentation, so that'll be good. But if something, if she had to check her calendar, and, so I'm hoping she'll be here in December. Otherwise, she'll come in January. Other than that, Northwest Hennepin League, I'll be going to that in, in November. And that's, oh, I attended the planning commission meeting, so I had the items that you saw. The variances were there. We had, yeah, and I just updated them on everything that's going on in the city. They had some good questions, and it was good to see and meet one of our new commissioners, too. Also, just wanted to say again, we have several openings for parks and planning, parks and planning. So if you know of anybody that you think might be interested, let them know, have them apply. And what is the deadline?
December, end of, end of December sometime.
Okay. Sometime in December. So check it out, let people know, and-
December 10th.
December 10th. And then we would be making those, doing the interviews in January and making those appointments in January. So that's all I have. Do you need a park commissioner for parks? Do you need a commissioner for planning? Is there somebody available for planning? Would be the 29th, right?
Ah, we have four, ah.
Do we have five?
The 22nd.
22nd, maybe?
Yeah, I can't-
It is five Mondays, so it'd be the 22nd.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the 22nd. Okay. And we'll do that. Do you know what's on the agenda yet?
Do we zone in public area for all?
Oh, well, you're, you're familiar with that, so there you go.
That works.
All right. Thank you. So with that, anything else? I don't think we have any other business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some motions.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. And we'll see you on the 15th.